Good evening and welcome to Claussen's June 5th regularly scheduled council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by our Police Chaplain, Stephen Traxel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to be here with you tonight. Let us bow our heads and pray. Lord, we're so thankful today for this beautiful day that you've given to us. We thank you for another opportunity to gather together in this place. We're so thankful for everyone that's participating in this meeting. We're asking, Lord, for your divine wisdom to help us, guide us, touch every council member. I pray a blessing upon each of them. I pray you bless their families for the work they're doing for this wonderful city. I pray a blessing upon our city. Lord, we need you in a great way. We need you to move among us and give us your divine order and your divine purpose for our city. Pray for every child, every son, every daughter that's here, every husband, every wife that represents this great community. We're asking, Lord, for a special blessing upon us today. We ask that you would give divine insight to all these that are here tonight, the things they're wanting. We pray your will would be done for all things. We thank you for all of this today, and Jesus, let me pray. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Woolley?
Here.
Councilmember Ayers?
Here.
Councilmember Malone?
Here.
Councilmember Moffett?
Here.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Here.
The first item on the agenda is consideration of approving the consent agenda. And what's contained in the consent agenda this week is the minutes of the regular city council meeting from Tuesday, May 15th, the minutes of a special city council workshop that was held on Tuesday, May 22nd, the appointment of Mark Pollak as representative, and Harry Drinkwine as alternate to SACRA, terms to expire June 30th, 2019, appointment of Harry Drinkwine as representative and Mark Pollak as alternate to the southeastern Oakland County Water Authority, term to expire June 30th, 2019, the purchase of one single axle, 108 SD Firelight Freightliner conventional cab chassis for the DPW, and a front plow, let's see, seven, eight yard dump body with a pre-wet system and front plow from Truck and Trailer Specialties, and those on the, in a dump truck. The total amount is $184,888, and this was approved in the 2017-2018 capital improvement budget plan.
Madam Mayor, I move the consent agenda to be approved as listed.
It's board.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Madam Mayor Woolley?
Yes. The next item on the agenda is a presentation by Jerry Mancore regarding the Claussen Veterans' Memorial that's located here in City Hall's Community Room. Step up to the mic.
My name is Jerry Mancore. I live at 9766 Oak Hill Road in Holly, Michigan. Back to Claussen. Anyway, very, very, thanks very, very much for allowing us to come here tonight and give our presentation. I'm extremely thankful to Mark Pollak and Doug Ballard for their help, their work, in helping us get this thing on the wall. I won't take a lot of time, say a lot of things, because my colleague's Patrick here, he'll do all the talking, but I would like to introduce you to the rest of our project, all volunteers, by the way, Bruce Smith, Loretta, Lwella Joyce, and Alan Summers, myself. Will Williamson is not able to join us tonight, but he's also, he's our machinist and plaque maker, as you see his work on the wall. Basically, what we're here for tonight really is to introduce you to the expansion possibilities that we are undergoing right now. As you know, we met here three years ago and got your approval, and at that time, we kind of indicated we might have as many as 150 veterans on the wall. Well, now we have almost 800 names, qualified Claussen veterans deceased, to go on the plaques, which means we're going to need six more plaques. So Patrick will explain that to you. Or any questions you have, ask of me, or Patrick, or Bruce, or Lwella, or Alan, and we can answer them all. Thank you. Patrick?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, because I know that you've put a lot of hard work and personal money into what we currently have, and it's beautiful. I think there's 240 names that are already up on the wall, and it's a lovely thing, and just, we're really grateful that you stepped up and addressed this. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank me and our staff. We've, we've all put a lot of work into it, three years' worth, so, and we're not done yet. Sooner or later, we're going to have 800 names on the wall. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Patrick Shabal. I'm a lifelong friend of the Mancore family. Can you hear me at this? Okay, good, good. Anyhow, as Jerry said, we want to explain our charter of our organization. Some of you already know what it's about, and others, it'll be news, but at any case, we do owe you an update, and to show you what the vision of the group is. There we go. We drive by them while going down the road all the time. Sometimes we even walk by them in the park, but often they're honor rolls or war memorials. We don't always notice them. If you look at them, sometimes they're very generic. They'll celebrate one branch of the service, or a particular war, or sometimes they'll just list the branches of the service. They vary, these memorials vary in their construction and their state of care, but often they're very general, and more often than not, they only celebrate those actually killed in action. Claussen's a unique community. I was amazed to hear that it was largely built on one lot at a time that was sold by Henry Ford to people who wanted to build so that they would be in close proximity to the assembly plants. And it's amazing what the community has grown. From World War II, essentially the beginning of the foundation of Claussen, the population really was anywhere between 4,000 and 8,000 through, let's say, Vietnam. And this all came to a decision with two men sitting in a park, while it's not them, this is probably what it looked like, Jerry Mancore and Alan Summers were sitting in, which was the Claussen Combined Class Reunion, and they were calling to mind how many people were deceased, but they really noticed how many of them had military service. The only thing that was interesting is when they were looking at the memorials and thinking of the memorial, it did not encompass really what Claussen, Claussen, the community devoted to our government and its, and its military effort. A memorial as it stands, across the street, would not take into account a young man who was 17 and with father's and mother's permission, served in Korea, and after being treated for frozen feet, returned to the Korean campaign. That young man was shot in the face. Bullet went through his nose and out his frontal lobe. He, he suffered, or went through, endured over a dozen surgeries, and spent 24 years living in military hospitals, and he died in his early 40s. By most killed-in-action memorials, that man wouldn't be recognized. So, that was the brother of Jerry Mancore. Everyone in Claussen knew him as Sonny. Sonny was just in his late teens when he was shot, and he died in his 40s. So Jerry and Alan thought about how many people they knew that served in the military from Claussen, and it grew, that number grew from their memories, from yearbook reference, from Grahamer's Funeral Home Records, that, that list grew to about 150, 160. And this was such a passionate concern of Jerry's that he was willing to install the first of the plaques to make sure these people were recognized, and that Claussen should be proud of them. However, Alan's research incredibly prolific, he's put countless hours into it, the known, the numbers grown in excess of 700. And again, the charter of this organization is to recognize all veterans served who have lived in Claussen. It also is only for active-duty people, and only, obviously, for, for the deceased. So, at that point, Jerry had funded most of this on his own dollar, but he realized the project needed, you know, needed some help in order to recognize everyone. So, a small team, friends and families of Jerry's and Alan's, got together and we started thinking about what this really could be. The three plaques are presently in the back of this hall, in the common room, has the original 240, has 240 names on it of the 760, 780. And with present, present research, we believe it's going to take just to bring us current, six extra plaques. And we consider that Phase One, the installation. Second phase, Phase Two, will be to add the additional three plaques flanking each side, and that will total approximately 800 names at that point, and that's Phase Two. But this is a learning experiment, too, and when you think of those memorials, we don't know of the people that go into it, the people that have put themselves and their family members at harm's way in, in serving our military. So the Phase Three really is, I mean, when you look at the list, it's just staggering that the, really, the Vietnam veterans are starting to just add to the list, and this list will grow, and I don't know how much room, how many more walls you have in this building, but the team that we assembled decided to take it one step further. And we would like to, at some point with the funds raised, is to create a virtual memorial, one that would allow content to be added behind each name, better than a cemetery, better than a war memorial. Family members and friends can download pictures, they can give little anecdotes about the people, and if we create the right software, and I'm thinking, the best way to describe it is kind of like a Facebook page, where you have a limited number of photos, some content donated by other members, we can put lives behind these names of these individuals that were willing to serve their community and their country. So, it would be that wall that you saw in the previous photo, with maybe one or two kiosks, the same information that's looping and visual on these pods and kiosks could be accessed from the internet. It'll take some programming and a, and a website, but this takes a foundation to generate money, to add names to the list, to maintain this physical memorial, and to build this virtual memorial. Just to, to kind of give you some feel of what your community has given, and I'm going to take a step back a little bit, to think of a community that typically has had 4,000 to 12,000 population, to have 800 people serve the military out of such an area, I'm certain that as we refine our data, we will find that Claussen has served harder, and to a greater degree than a lot of communities. It's that salt of the earth, you know, that middle-class, strong-work ethic, pride that comes out of a community such as Claussen. So when we look at this, the list is quite staggering. It's 800, almost 800 names long, fills up about 15 pages of big worksheet, double-wide worksheet, and we're recording their birthdate, their entry day into the military, their discharge date, information. But what we have is 120 common family names, 120 names where we had more than two people assigned to that, that, that last name. From Alan's perspective, he's identified 69 families where they've had two or more. One family had five members. Two, two families had four members that have, have contributed their, parts of their life to military service. 25 people have been killed in action of this list. 12 have been wounded in action. One was mortally wounded. They call it seriously wounded in action, and that was Donald Mancore. He died decades later. Two people were missing in action and killed, found to be killed. The longest military service was 39 years. Four of these people had more than 30 years on this list, seven with more than 35 years. Oh, I got that reversed. Four with 35 years and seven with 30 years or greater. So, our purpose here is one to bring you up to speed, to let you know that we have set up the organization. Fortunately, we've gone under the umbrella of the Claussen Community Foundation, which gives us the 501(c) status. This was at the advice of the District Representative, Martin, I can't pronounce his last name.
Arnold.
Yes, yes. Anyhow, he, he suggested that that would be the minimum, lowest-cost overhead way of accomplishing that, and also to make sure that most dollars go to the actual event and the funds, and, and that it ties in with the community and its objectives as well. So, we thank you as a, as a city council for recognizing this project and valuing it. We would ask for your support in encouraging others to donate, for others to nominate people. In the nomination process, and we will have these simple documents available online in a couple places, we would ask that people consult the registry of the names we have already, and then if they don't see a name, make sure to nominate them. Again, they need to be deceased, active, active-duty military, and they have to either be a Claussen resident, attend a Claussen school, or have been a business owner. We have a simple form, it's a one-page form for the nomination, and Alan thus far has been vetting all of these nominations. On donation, we have a form, simple form, and we have, let's see, we have, do you have an envelope and a brochure, Jerry?
Each have.
Oh, you each have one, okay. Inside, oh, very good. You'll see that there's an envelope, a self-addressed envelope, and we'll even have simple instructions online for, for donations. Lastly, if anyone has, is a merchant, or has a, has a, an employment in a public space, we do have plaques and displays, who might have that, which will have a pocket, an acrylic pocket holder for the same brochures you have, and to show what the plaques look like. Anyhow, so, we would love merchants in public places to have this on display. Again, it's not only to finish Phase Two, but to work toward Phase Three, and also to generate a fund that continues to, to help cover the costs associated with the effort. Let's see. So, we, we thank you for your time and your endorsement of our activity. I, I said it earlier, Claussen should be very proud of its sons and daughters, so let's show them the respect, and be proud of them, and, and let's commemorate their, their sacrifices. Again, we're on Facebook as the Claussen Federal, Claussen Veteran Memorial, and we will also have increased content on the Claussen Foundation website. I'll open it up for any questions, if anyone has them, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions, but I do want to thank you. Very well done. The, the display itself is very well done, and your presentation here. Just commend you for, for your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any questions? Well, thank you very much, and we hope, hope to get Phase Two going, so.
Oh, great.
We'll see what we can do.
It's a stretch target, but maybe by, maybe by, by Labor Day, you know, if things go well. We have started collecting money, and it's over $1,000 at this point, so it's a, it's a slow roll, but right now, we're asking for increased promotion of our, our activity.
I have a question. Do you know what the goal amount is? You said you have $1,000. What, what, do you know the total cost?
Yeah, we believe it'll be somewhere in the 90 to $100,000 range, somewhere in that range. So, ongoing, again, we can do it in phases, but the plaques themselves, you know, the six plaques would be the first priority, and that one, it's about $800 to $1,000 a plaque. And these plaques have been designed with the lowest-cost, but most durable option available. They've intentionally not been done out of bronze, because bronze tends to attract theft, and they're in a format that can be updated or modified. If we find there's an error on, on a tag, we can change it. So there's a lot of engineering that went on to make it the lowest-cost, but most presentable format. And from there, you know, the programming and the, and the virtual would be the next goal. So, it doesn't have to be done overnight, but taking care of the names we have right now is the most important thing.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Oh, if there are Fourth of July activities, you know, we would love to have a booth there, and we would hope for your support of that.
Michael Paquette is who you should contact? Michael Paquette or Maureen Holtzel are the two individuals that, Michael Paquette takes care of the Midway Carnival inside of the park, and Maureen Holtzel takes care of the space over there in the craft area.
Okay. Thank you.
If you go to the ClaussenFourthofJuly.org website, you can get contact information for them.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, the next item on the agenda is consideration of the reintroduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances.
Item seven.
Presentation.
Presentation.
Question. 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 Question.[1346.42]
staff and national consultants to evaluate where that program is, what it's doing particularly well, and what can be worked on in the next year. This assessment is not meant to be a qualitative ranking of the communities downtown. Instead, it's an evaluation examines the effectiveness of the local Main Street program within its own context and circumstances, and recommends a level of activity that the community is prepared to undertake in the coming year appropriate to the overall goals and objectives. During this year's assessment visit, information was collected from a variety of sources, including interviews with the DDA Board, committee members, local elected officials, business owners and staff. The information was looked at through the lens of ten national Main Street community criteria. The criteria is intended to promote the national standards of performance established by the National Main Street Organization and its annual accreditation for those meet those They provide a benchmark and a guideline on how the local program, the revitalization program, should optimally function and as well as serve as an incentive for programs to perform more effectively. So these ten criteria that we mentioned are that we see a broad-based community support, that there is a good vision and mission statement, a comprehensive work plan, a historic preservation ethic, active board and committees, adequate operating budget, a paid professional DDA Main Street program manager, there's a program of ongoing training, they regularly report key statistics to the county, and that they are a member of the Main Street network. And the answer for all of these criteria was yes, and Claussen program meets each. So, that being said, I just want to highlight a few of the past highlights for the last year. So through the evaluation and through our work, we have received a lot of positive feedback on the appearance of downtown that can be attributed directly to the hard work and planning of staff and volunteers. We felt a great sense of optimism when we were here. The Main Street program has demonstrated a strong working partnership with other community organizations, including the Chamber of Commerce, the Library, the Historical Society, a number of others. The program completed its design guidelines internally by staff and by volunteers. This is a very important piece to the Main Street four-point approach of demonstrating again their commitment for historic preservation. And what we're really proud of is the program and business community had an opportunity to shine through some acknowledgement and awards by Main Street Oakland County this year for the development of the design guidelines, the Cinema in the Street event, and for Businessperson of the Year, Mary Liz Curtin. So, that being said, you have a very dedicated staff and group of volunteers that are up to the challenge of continuing the efforts that make downtown Claussen the best it can be. As your liaison with the county, I am very happy to present this plaque to confirm the accreditation as a select-level Main Street program this year.
Do you want to come up?
I'd like to say a couple of words too.
Please.
Wade Fleming, your Commissioner for Oakland County. I was invited to this event and just made aware of it by the Oakland County Economic Development. And I said, "Oh, I'll go." You know, you don't know who's going to win, what's going to happen. So I showed up there and I saw Mayor Woolley, and I said, "Oh, we'll hang out together." So we were sitting there with Joan and other members of the DDA, really not knowing what to expect. This is kept pretty secret, you know? And all of a sudden, Claussen's called up there once. Claussen's called up there twice. They stole the show! I mean, they got more awards than anybody. It was, it was... We were at the... Picture this. We're at the Strand Theater, newly remodeled Strand Theater in Pontiac. It was catered by Slow's Barbecue, so great food, right? And then it was a pretty packed house, you know? All these communities represented. And I could not have been prouder. And Mayor Woolley and I were sitting there saying, "Wow, we didn't expect this." But several awards you got, so I was, we were really, really thrilled. I mean, you're doing a lot of good things here in Claussen. I know as a city council, you had to strike a balance between what the residents want and what the businesses want, what your chamber wants. I've been in your position. I know that's a delicate balance, but I'm telling you what, you're doing some things right here. So I can just only encourage you to continue to cooperate as a council and a DDA, set your goals together and so forth, and the sky's the limit. I mean, to quote one of my favorite TV anchorman paraphrase, "Claussen's kind of a really big deal in Oakland County." A really big deal. And I mean that seriously because you stole the show. So congratulations to you. Congratulations to Joan and her team. I couldn't be prouder. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure. We're good.
I'm going to get out of the way.
Absolutely.
It was a fun night, wasn't it?
It was.
All photos.
All right. Three, two, one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. regular city council meeting.
Madam Mayor, I move the regular city council meeting schedule for Tuesday, July 3, 2018 be changed to Monday, July 2, 2018.
Support. Is there any discussions or questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the reintroduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 54, Peddlers, Solicitors, and Canvassers, Article One, in general by adding Section 5413. This is to create a new Chapter 55, Mobile Food Vending, regarding the regulations and application process for permitting vending services and offering sales for food beverages and related merchandise.
Mayor, I move the proposed ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 54, Peddlers, Solicitors, and Canvassers, Article One, in general by adding Section 54-13 exemptions and to create new Chapter 55, Mobile Food Vending, regarding the regulations and application process for permitting vending, servicing, and offering for sale food, beverages, and/or related merchandise from any motorized or non-motorized cart, car, stand, trailer vehicle, or other device designated to be portable and not permanently attached to the ground within the city on public or private property be reintroduced and entered into the first reading.
Support.
Questions, comments regarding the most recent?
I really liked the rewrite. I thought that it really incorporated everything that we were looking for. I thought it was really well done.
I still, I'm still not a fan of the additional fifty-dollar fee applied to vendors at school athletic events mandating that contribution to the athletic boosters. I'd prefer to see that go away, but it's just me.
Well, or at least cap it or something. I get, it still seems a little loose.
What do you mean by that?
Well, and I don't know how many activities they do, but if there's, what, seven football games, then they got to donate three hundred and fifty dollars. Is it worth it then for them to do it? I mean, is it, you know, one per year, one per season, capped at a hundred and fifty? You know, there's got to be some limit to that.
Discuss that on the fee schedule. That's kind of on the fee schedule.
There we go.
It's within a couple items.
Pardon me?
You can amend that when we talk about the fee schedule.
Okay.
Which is tonight is fine.
Yeah, I don't want to tie up the passage of this ordinance any further.
Which then I could change this to match that.
Excellent. I like that suggestion. Is there any other comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is the second reading and adoption of the ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances to create a new Chapter 55, Special Events, Article One, in general outlining the regulations and application process for permitting the use of public and private property for special events in the city as deemed applicable by the city administration and/or the city council on providing standards of conduct, application process, exemptions from certain requirements for certain persons or groups, enforcement and appeals and hearings before the city manager on any denial of a permit.
Your Honor, I move the proposed ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances to create a new Chapter 56, Special Events, Article One, in general, outlining the regulations and application process for permitting the use of public and private property for special events in the city as deemed applicable by the city administration and/or the city council and providing standards of conduct, application process, exemptions from certain requirements for certain persons or groups, enforcement and appeals and hearings before the city manager on any denial of a permit be entered into a second reading and adopted.
Support. Any questions or comments? Roll, Mr. King, said, did you want to say something?
I was going to make this comment, just as a element of knowledge for you all. There is an accident waiver and release of liability parent guardian waiver for minors that will accompany this. And under the present state of the law, there's a legitimate issue on whether a parent can actually waive the right of a minor. I've given that opinion, so it's in the file, but I think most people will honor it, but under the existing state of the law, if you have a minor that wants to sue when they become eighteen, they can do it. Proving the case at that point might be a little difficult, but...
Thank you. There's no other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
And the ordinance will be put in place. The next item on the agenda is consideration of approving the proposed 2018, 2019 City Department fee schedules.
Mayor, I move the increases, decreases, deletions, and/or new fees along with boarding changes in the Building Department, City Clerk's Office, Department of Public Works, Engineering, Water, Public Works, Engineering, Water, Parks and Rec Department, and Police Department, and the unchanged fee schedule for the Library and Treasurer be approved effective July 1, 2018.
Support.
Were there any questions?
Yeah, I would, I don't know how, but I'd like to amend this to... I would prefer to amend it to remove the fifty dollars per day for Claussen athletic... Not that I don't support the Claussen athletic boosters, but to mandate that seems, I don't know, seems like an overreach. But I don't know if...
Who, do we know, like, who put that in and what was their thinking? Who wrote that in? Was that one of us that suggested that or sent that?
It was based on the school board, their input, her input regarding that, then the Parks and Rec, I think, as well, some of their questions, concerns that were raised. And we discussed it, and it was kind of...
And is it to make up for funds that they're getting for some of the way and they feel like they're going to lose or what?
Possibly, yes. That's what they were stating.
Now, I guess I've talked to the school board president, and there's a concern that these fees are going to make it prohibitive, and the food trucks aren't going to want to participate because it's an expense to them.
Well, as part of the special events thing, if it's, that exempts that. Whereas if it's a school function, they're going, or through Fourth of July, it kind of circumvents that, so they don't have to pay that fee if they're paying the group organization. So that concern kind of was taken away with that exception.
What if we reduce it to twenty-five dollars and cap it at, say, a hundred dollars or something? Because of football games, there's like seven or eighty, right? Baseball games, there's a lot more, but no one ever runs baseball or soccer or anything like that. It's football games primarily, I think, that would...
It would be nice if somebody vended during the softball or the baseball games.
But if we could keep it lower so that it's not cost prohibitive for the person doing business, but it's a little boom for the PTA at the same time?
Yeah.
Or the boosters, whomever it's going to.
I don't know about refreshments, concessions on site either. That's, that wouldn't be interfered with by the food truck in any way.
They typically don't do both.
Okay.
Well, that's not true.
Sometimes, yeah, like they have the ice stands and stuff, but they're totally different,
too. You're going to get a cheap hot dog at the stand and a bag of chips, right, and a water or something. And then if the food truck shows up, you're going to have a variety, and it's going to be more money. So it's different clientele, too.
Good point.
Do we need a consensus to...
Yeah, I don't know. Do we need to amend the motion? Does council member need to amend the motion?
Well, do we...
Does she desire to amend the motion?
Did we land on twenty-five or are we moving it?
I'm fine with that.
Someone need to make them, yeah.
I think it's more practical, twenty-five than fifty.
And I like a cap option.
With a cap, is that what you're saying?
So does the...
What? Is there a motion?
There's been a motion that's been supported.
We're now discussing the fine-tuning of...
So, so do we amend the motion?
Well, you can amend the motion unless it's substantive, and then you might have to withdraw that motion and have a new motion. So you don't want to sup, you don't want to supplement it. I would say it suggests you go through your discussion, and the proponent of the motion, if you decide you want to withdraw that motion instead of a new one, then do that. Because it's already on the table as far as what it is. So you want to go, you can only amend a motion once.
So, Madam Mayor, I move that we remove the previous motion made in regard to the fee schedules.
Is that, does that require support? Or she just removes her...
Yeah, it should, yeah, it should be supported.
Okay, supported.
Roll call, please.
Well...
No.
He just withdrew a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, you're just withdrawing the motion. So then you're going to continue the debate and clarify the nature of the motion you want.
What are we capping it at? Twenty-five capped at what?
A hundred?
I like a hundred.
I like a hundred. So...
Yeah.
Mayor, I remove, or I move...
You have to vote on the motion first.
So, okay, so...
We vote on the motion to remove, to withdraw? Because we never voted on the other one.
We didn't, we didn't vote on the original.
We didn't vote, yeah. No, we had discussion.
That's fine, that's fine. That's withdrawn.
She's withdrawn her motion.
Then, now we're moving on to a revised motion.
Motion. So, Mayor, I move the increases, decreases, deletions, and/or fees along with the boarding changes in the Building Department, City Clerk's Office, Department, Public Works, Engineering, Parks and Rec, Police Department, and unchanged schedule for the Library and Treasurer Department in addition to removing the fifty-dollar mandatory fee to the sporting fund for food trucks and that be replaced with a twenty-five-dollar fee capped at a hundred dollars per calendar year be approved effective July 1, 2018.
Just board.
Excellent job.
Communicate clearly.
Good job.
Well, presumably is. I think the clerk will have the issue of interpreting it.
Hey, you got the video, right? You got to watch the tape.
We'll play it back a couple times.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Excellent. And the motion carries. The next item is consideration approving a resolution in support of HB 5754 and 5755, which would clarify the frequency requirements for testing residential backflow preventers on in-ground sprinkler systems.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the resolution in support of HB 5754 and 5755, which would clarify the frequency requirements for testing residential backflow preventers on in-ground sprinkler systems.
Board.
I'd love a bit of discussion on this. Mr. Albrecht, I know that this is something that you've...
Yeah, I've talked about this actually with a Troy councilman, and I spoke about it with Jim Albus a few months ago. And I just found out over the weekend that our representative, Representative Howrillak has introduced these bills and is going to discussion, I think in front of the Department of Natural Resources in Michigan or something along those lines, tomorrow morning. And I just wanted to, basically, there's some, there's some language that is being misinterpreted by municipalities as to the frequency of required testing, and this helps clarify some of that. And so I was hoping we could support that, and he requested that we pass this resolution as well.
He works very hard for us, and we appreciate all of his hard work. Any other comments?
So what does our support do? Just he can go and say, "Hey, these cities..."
Support this. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of paying the bills.
Madam Mayor, let's pay the bills.
Support. Were there any questions or comments on the bills? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
And we're going to pay the bills. The next item on the agenda is the city attorney's report.
Not at this moment, other than going to close session, discuss pending litigation.
Thank you very much. And the next item on the agenda is the city manager's report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do have two positive items. I was able to experience the live bond sale for our pension bonds last Wednesday at the office of the underwriter Stiefel in Southfield. Very interesting experience. I had never, I was usually on the end of the phone, call at the end of the sale, but I got to witness it live, and seeing people's interest in our bonds was very interesting. There was actually a request for two and a half times the amount of the bonds, which they informed me is terrific and unusual, but what that does is drive down individual interest costs for the series of bonds. But over the fourteen years, our interest rate will be, end up being around 3.93, or what they call the all-in true interest cost, which was much better than our originally anticipated four and a half when we started this process. The great news is over fourteen years of repayments on the bonds were estimated to save 4.7 million dollars by bonding for our pension as opposed to just funding it through MERS. So it worked out a lot better than we had expected, and I couldn't have been more pleased. Very interesting process that I got to witness, and anyways, they said it couldn't have gone any better. So I was very pleased with that. So our, you know, council's foresight and support to do this paid off big time for the taxpayers here. And then the other item I wanted to mention, as we focused on, is the debt millage for 2018 is dropping, which was part of our plan. It will actually drop from a total of 7.65 mils down to 7.3 mils. So we're dropping .35 mils, and that will be including the first assessment of the sidewalk millage. So as we had planned to do, even though we're adding the sidewalk to the list, we're dropping our overall debt millage by .35 mils. So that was something else I wanted to mention. That's all I have.
That's great. I want to also give Mr. Howrillak credit for helping us getting that bond issue without him. That may not have been possible. So I want to again thank him for his hard work.
Yeah, and I'll also mention that Senator Nolenberg as well stepped up along with Martin. They worked together on our behalf to make sure that sunset provision did not happen. So, yeah, it was, it's a savior for us. I mean, I said, 4.7 million dollars over fourteen years is incredible, absolutely incredible savings. So, yeah, I commend them both.
Thank you. City Clerks' report?
Hello. So we were supposed to have a joint workshop, as you noticed. We, Victoria had done another meeting scheduled to reach out to everyone. We were noticing that the Building and Planning Director, Jim Albus, cannot attend anything really in June. Of course, he's one of the main departments that we want to discuss. So, and then we started looking at that July and August where summer vacations, planning, trying to get three boards together is very difficult. So we were hoping that maybe we could reschedule to September or to October, more in the fall, as like a fall refresh, I guess, together. So I didn't know how you guys felt about that, to still have the meeting but kind of push it more towards that. So once school starts and things kind of get back on board, a September, October date would work better.
Disappointing, but understandable.
Yeah. So we might send that out to kind of play like now, you know, some dates, play with some dates around in those dates, those months. June 19, just so you know, we've had some discussion, and we will have a new voice of Claussen when you call in. June 19, we are working with our phone operator, and Stacy, our treasurer, has agreed to be the new voice. Because we know that there are some issues with the numbers and the wrong people, and things have changed, retirements and all that, so that she's going to sit in the locked room for probably a couple hours and go through the whole prompt and say all that stuff. So you'll have a new voice. Michelle will be, I guess, retired officially now. She's the current voice, but maybe it'll be sad to go, I don't know.
Yeah, I called in, I think, last week sometime, and I wondered when that was going to happen.
We finally got it on the books. That's been a work in progress, so...
Well, and I think that this, it's been something that has been on city staff's radar, except it's an all-encompassing item. There isn't just one or two easy changes that had to be done in its entirety when it was done.
And so Stacy will have to, will have a script for her and all that stuff, so it'll be a fun time. Currently, we are working on, Suzie and I have sat down and talked, and I know Barb and I think a couple other people. We've, and we brought it up last time, that we're going to work on trying to, you know, meet with John, of course, or Renus, about bringing forth the idea about the chickens, burn ordinance. And Suzie and I even discussed commercial blight. I don't know if that has been discussed, but again, those are some things that have been discussed with the vacant properties. We get that question a lot about if there's anything being done with them, and there are ordinances that you can establish for those things. So other cities have done that through MML. I've seen some examples that we can kind of do. And then June 1 was the deadline to purchase a dog license. Some people have already been noticing that the fees have gone up now. So we dramatically increased, and now there's a penalty of thirty dollars if you come in, unless it's a new adoption, a new dog. So that's a nice thing when people come in. So that's a nice thing when people come in. We'll see if they have to pay the late fee. Again, the voter registration deadline for the August 7th primary is July 9th. I like to keep on telling everyone that, because please, please, please register, please vote. The absentee ballots will arrive, again, on around June 23rd in a couple weeks. And we are mailing out the applications, most likely on Thursday, to those that are on the permanent list. I always like to do it about two months ahead of time. And they will be receiving a dual application, so we'll have information on the August and the November. So it saves money in it also, so they can check and just turn one in rather than forget if they do one. And anyone who wants to do it, they can call in if they know they're going to be away at school. They can call up until the time, I mean, August, they're not quite away yet, that's more for November, but if there's any issues like that. So please, register, please vote. It's what we always like to see. It's that 100%. I don't know if we'll ever get that ever in my lifetime, but we always hope for that. And, of course, we're still accepting applications for precinct workers. We're always willing and ready to take on new faces to help with us, and it's a great opportunity. We do pay, and it's a great opportunity to help to see the voting process right firsthand and meet everyone in the city. We have the applications available on the city's website, and of course, in our office. And I did put the updated master plan on the city website. It is out there now, so if anyone wants to review what was adopted, it is out there under the master plan link. I still will make it a little bit prettier, if you will, to kind of mention it, but there's a link there. So it is out there, because McKenna did supply the complete version, so it is out there. And I believe we are going to get hard copies to each of you and then the planning commission. So you actually have the hard copy as well, the bound version of it for your records. And I guess the update, union contracts will be coming forth at the next agenda. We've been working on those for the three unions. It's been a long process, but I, they will be up for you guys to ratify at the next meeting. And then I just wanted to know the status of the investigation of the sale of Renshaw for John or Renus, if we have an update, or if you want to talk afterwards.
Yeah, we will.
Okay. And that is all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Were there any unfinished business? New business? Mr. Ayers?
August 11th, Donald Maine Streetcar Show. We'll have all our road together by July, so it's one good thing. And it's kind of rough for us right now to get posters and stuff around, but we're going to do it. So we're looking to have a good weather and a good time doing that. And the other thing I want to mention, all the electrical outages we've had in Claussen, everybody's having them. It's terrible. I, we can't help you personally, other than we complain to Edison every single day. Mark's on the phone. He's got, I think, what do you want? We're trying to get people to call special number, Edison, which he could give you, and, but we're trying. We're all, we're all involved. My electricity goes on and off, too. It's terrible, I hate it, but what are we going to do?
What was that number again, Mark? I know you know it by heart.
I actually have it right here.
Is it 877? Let's test my memory. 591-6960?
You win the prize.
And I do encourage, Harry Drinkwine talked to Mike Palchesco today again. Every time you have an outage, please report it on that number. A lot of times, he's not aware. They can get reports, check equipment. They are still upgrading equipment, they assure us constantly. And they've got their engineers involved for the substations, which I think is helping, because they can actually figure out what equipment is failing. So when you have an outage, please call that number, leave your name, your address, and the time of the outage, if you know it. And continue to report those so that they can get that in the system and then continue to check. So, I think to this point, it's starting to work, although we had, Harry lives in the Gardner area and had an outage, brief outage during the middle of the night. We had a large brownout area yesterday, the school let out early. Those were ones he was not aware of, but he is now. So, those are the ones they want to try and eliminate, where even the brief ones, which are as convenient as, or inconvenient as, as the others, report those when they happen, so...
I had one last night, I think it was about 4:00 AM. Anything else? I wanted to mention that this weekend is the citywide garage sale. So, make sure you come and, let's see, other people's trash could be your treasure. So, please come and check out what we have to offer.
I have one thing. Debbie and I and Mark all have graduates this year, and Debbie and I sat through the commencement on Sunday, and I just want to say, congratulations to all the high school graduates from Claussen and from Utica?
Yeah, Utica, Ford, my daughter attends, yeah.
Right? But the commencement was so excellent, not just because I loved each one of those kids that was giving the speech, but it just highlighted what the strengths of Claussen are, those bonds that are formed when kids are in preschool or in kindergarten, and just the success that can come when people just bond together and support each other along the way. We have great, we have a great community. We have people in the schools who care, we have coaches who care, we have parents who care, and we have kids who are loyal to each other, and I just think we're really blessed for that. And I think we should all just remember that when we're driving down the streets, that all these people are precious to each other, and that we are really in a unique position to help lift each other up and to take every opportunity to do so. I was just really proud to be part of Claussen on Sunday, not just for personal reasons, but as a community. It was really great.
I would agree. You know, just when they, they have now become a tradition, early on in the ceremonies, they ask those that have graduated from Claussen. And when you look around the room, and there are so many grownups, including myself, that have graduated and grandparents that have graduated and are watching their grandchildren walk across that stage here in town. It's, it's really neat and special, so, thank you for being us. Okay?
One more thing. I, I know social media has done pretty good at getting the word out, but the Claussen Highlights had the wrong date for the Kitty Parade. Is that right?
Yeah.
That's, we were trying to discuss that before. I know the, it got posted on Facebook that that was in fact the wrong date. So the Kitty Parade is June 30th versus June 24th, right, is what it said in the highlights?
23rd or something.
Yeah.
So it's the 30th at 11:00 AM.
Yes. And I know they're looking for people to judge, so...
Right, they gather right behind us here in the middle school, high school parking lot. So decorate your bikes, decorate yourselves, decorate your dog, cat, and come on out. It's a good time.
It's a great tradition, too, my children. I've grown, and I remember, and we used to love it.
I participated. If there's nothing else, a public discussion is now open. Stand, get to the mic and just, come to the mic and state your name and your address.
Please, please come to the mic, otherwise the, we can't hear it. Thank you.
Nobody will throw nothing at you.
Hi, I'm David Engel. I live at 833, he's 14. I came to you guys a couple years ago about this jake brake deal. With this road construction, it's getting really bad. All these gravel haulers have got their straight exhaust, and when they come by my house, they start hitting their jake brake. So, so all your guys are sitting on my front porch one day, and we're not doing anything. Right there is what you hear.
Jesus Christ.
I just wanted to give you an example. I listen to that all day long. You didn't do anything about it before, I'd like for you to do something about it now.
Oh, Mr. King said, I don't believe legally there was anything we could do about it. We researched it, and there was nothing that could be done, unfortunately.
Is it noise ordinance, you can't?
I don't, oh, there is Mr. King.
Because it is that loud.
You'd have to have someone out there with a monitor, a noise monitor, getting the decibel level. And that, that, you know, that, I don't know how long that person would be there. I don't know what it would take away from the enforcement elsewhere in the city, so those are the issues. I mean, we can't just issue a ticket without a decibel reading, because they're going to attack it.
I wonder if the change on our 14-mile on Main Street in the left and right turns will eliminate some of that, and people will start...
No, it won't. It's the trucks coming off the expressway. Because when they hit 14, when they hit Rochester Road, that's when they do their jake brakes.
I was thinking that they might go towards Stevenson. What do you think?
No, I, I know what Dave's saying about this, what, they're backing down for the light, and, and the jakes are more popular now than when I was driving. You know, we just shoot blocks out the window, but...
And if you listen, if you hear all these gravel haulers that are running here in town, they're all running straight exhaust. And when they do their jake brake, it puts soot out that lands on my porch. So it's a, you know, it's a, it's a hell of a deal. And I'm sick of it. I've been here once, I'm here again. I just gave you a noise. If you even just had a sign printed up out there that said, "No jake brakes" in each city.
You could try that.
I say, is that something that we can do?
And have one officer stop one truck and tell them, they'll all get the word, they'll start passing it around on their CBs, that you're getting them in this town for the jake brake.
Yeah, you can try a TCO, traffic control order, that, that might monitor that, if you can put the signs up in an appropriate location, and then...
Do we have to have a study or something like that to put a sign up, or can we just vote to put one up?
No, you can just put one up.
Because that's an informative...
We don't need a study. We know what the noise is and everything else.
Yeah, you have an idea.
What is it, what is it, sorry, what does a jake brake do?
Jake brake retards the motor, or backs it off through the, backs the whole truck down.
Through the exhaust.
Through the exhaust.
That way they don't have to hit their foot brake. It's a lazy way of stopping.
Well, you have to hit the foot brake.
Is it laziness?
Hit the foot brake.
I think, I think, my guess is, it increases the lifespan of the brakes.
Definitely. Definitely.
Traffic and Safety is meeting Thursday, if you...
Well, then I suggest it be on that agenda, and see what they do.
Dave, can you go to that meeting? I mean...
Yeah.
We could start there.
What's that?
Meeting Thursday?
Yeah, Traffic Safety Board.
Traffic and Safety, because once they do something, they could do some different studies that we can't do. And once, then it could come back to us, we can figure out when to put signs up.
Right here, Thursday?
Yeah.
Is it here, yeah, and here?
They meet here, Thursday at 7:00.
7:00, Thursday?
Yep.
Bring your horn.
Well, I brought that just to give you an example.
Don't bring a horn, because it's scary.
Oh, sure.
We have a couple of older people.
I didn't want to give anybody a heart attack or anything. Well, I talked to the police chief, and this is on a whole different deal. There's one steel hauler that goes through every morning between 5:00 and 5:20. And I was talking to Chris, my next door neighbor, and she sleeps with a fan on. She said she had to put her fan on high now, because that truck wakes her up every morning. Like, I talked to the police chief about it.
Well, and he, he's the head of the Traffic and Safety Board, so...
Thursday at 7:00, I'll be here.
30, 7:30.
Thank you.
7:30.
Thank you very much.
What color is that truck?
Pardon?
What color is that?
I don't know. I'm usually in the house, but I can be outside. It's a steel hauler, I know, I hear him every morning. And across the street, Ron and Carolyn, she's been keeping notes on it for a few years. She kept, wrote down every time he came by in the mornings. She had a whole list of when he had come by.
Mr. Engel, just to clarify, it is Thursday at 7:30 here.
Thursday at 7:30?
In this room.
I'll be here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public discussion? The discussion is now closed.
Madam Mayor, I move that we move to closed session.
Sure. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Moffett? Councilmember Albrecht?